Thank you all so much for being here. Normally, obviously, we do this in an event. We've got a huge crowd normally, but like the session, we're happy to do this virtually. And Pro Tem Reed, I guess this is your first time doing this. You know, hopefully, we'll be able to have it as an event next year. But, Mr. Speaker, I think you've been doing this for, what, three or four years now probably with us?
Yeah, yeah.
Normally at the Realtors Association.
We do it at the Realtors Association. You're right. It's a lot of energy. It's always a good event, good night.
Yes, sir.
We've all had to make sacrifices and make some changes. But I'm glad you're doing this.
Yes, sir.
It's a good way to get some information out.
We always appreciate you all just being willing to share the information with the public. I think this is a really good way to communicate a lot of important information. And before we get started, congratulations, by the way. I get to say Pro Tem Reed now. That's exciting. I might have to catch myself and not say Mr. Leader, but I'm doing my best.
Well, I appreciate it, Sean. It's a great privilege for me, great opportunity. Certainly, we took some time on Tuesday, rightfully so, to honor Senator Morris, Dale Morris, who served longer than any other Pro Tem in the history of the Alabama Senate, and just did an extraordinary job, and will still be with us, working on some very important legislation. But it's a great honor and a great privilege for me. And my members have given me a lot of responsibility, so I'm going to be working to execute those duties the best I know how. So, we've had a good week. It's been exciting. We've had good accomplishments. So, for first week in the new role, I'm pleased.
That's great. A lot of that talk on the Senate floor when he was being elected and sworn in, you know, at first, we're talking about the big shoes to fill with Senator Morris and about how Pro Tem Reed's the perfect person to fill it. But new leader Clay Scofield also remarked that he's got to fill the hairstyle, I think was what Leader Scofield was saying. He doesn't have a big shoes to fill, he just has to figure out the hair, so.
I told him, good luck.
That's great.
One thing about my hair is that, as you say, Mr. Speaker, you've heard this, when you serve in these roles over time, people can tell as you serve, your hair gets white, you know? They say that about people in leadership roles. They're not going to be able to say that about me. I'm already this way before I got here.
Yes, sir. Well, you've also been serving in a leadership position for several years now.
That's true.
And, you know, I'm assuming that makes the transition a little easier, but describe how that process has played out the last couple of months.
Well, it would make the process easier. Certainly, you know, Senator Morris and I have worked very closely as Majority Leader and as President Pro Tem, and a lot of similar responsibilities in being able to make sure that the members had the things that they needed and working together. So, I think there's been some benefits certainly from my tenure as Majority Leader. That was a great honor and privilege for me to serve in that role for six years. So, I've built strong relationships with my members, both Republican and Democrat, of which is very important in being able to make things move forward in an appropriate way. One of the things that I said, kind of in my acceptance remarks after the vote, was that my goal was to make sure that I worked with every member of the Alabama Senate, allowed their voice to be heard. We were going to differ on different issues and topics. Republicans differ with each other on topics. Certainly, the Republicans and the Democrats are going to differ. But the goal is for everybody to be heard. And when you get that as your goal, you wind up with a really good product for the people of Alabama, because everybody's ideas and thoughts matter in the process. So, but I'm excited about it, and it's, again, just a great privilege for me. And looking forward to working with the Speaker and having the two chambers continue to work closely and carefully together on things that are super important for the people of Alabama. We've got a lot to do. We've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of things that are really important. You know, if you really think back, I was talking with one of my colleagues, you know, a lot of times, the second year of a quadrennium is a year that many members really dig into things that are important for them and their individual communities. Maybe reasons they ran for office originally was to do certain things. And we really weren't able to have that second year. I mean, it was so abbreviated. So, there's a lot of robust attitude, a lot of legislation that's going to be coming from all parts of the state that House and Senate members are going to be very anxious to be a part of. And so, I'm excited about moving forward. We're trying to manage the protocols, working together as best we can, and making sure we keep people safe. But working efficiently and effectively is going to be my goal as Pro Tem.
I really liked how you brought up the bipartisan nature of both the Senate and the House. Obviously, you work very well with Leader Singleton, and you work very well with Leader Daniels. You know, and I was just looking at my TV a few minutes ago, and they've got Congress on, and they're just going at each other's throats. And I think it's such a huge contrast to people who don't understand how the Alabama Legislature works. It's probably as cohesive a group as you could get on both sides of the aisle, and certainly both chambers. You know, obviously, you've been doing it for a few years, but a new leader of the Senate here. Do you envision that cohesive nature and just harmony continuing here with the leadership change?
Oh, yeah. I have a great deal of respect for Pro Tem Reed. And I really enjoyed working with Senator Morris as well. He was, in some ways, a mentor for me when I first became Speaker. Of course, he was already in the leadership role in the Senate, and he helped me tremendously. So, he'll be missed, and is very much appreciated for what he has done for me and the state as a whole in his leadership. But with the changing of leadership in the Senate, Pro Tem Reed is, I have a great deal of respect for this man, both on a personal level as well as professional. And he and I, we've already, this COVID issue and trying to put procedures and policies and protocols in place, we've been working hand in hand for many hours trying to get all this ready. And so, our relationship's good, and we're going to move forward. Because at the end of the day, the legislative body needs to be working very close together, and we're trying to take care of the needs of the state. So, and we've had a good week, and I'm looking forward to the days ahead.
Speaking of relationships, one thing from last session that was maybe left a little unanswered, a little tension perhaps between the Governor and the Legislature, but she just had a State of the State. From everything I've seen, you know, the relationship's as strong as ever. But I'll ask both of you all, and Senator Reed first, how would you describe, first of all, the relationship with the Governor, but also just react to her State of the State message?
Well, I have a really good relationship with Kay Ivey. I mean, serving as Majority Leader in the Senate when Kay Ivey was the Lieutenant Governor of Alabama, I'm working with her and her staff every day because we're looking at the calendars, managing what's going to be the upset topic, what's going to be the difficult things, what are the things that are not going to be any conflict, and just kind of that pattern, constantly working together with Governor Ivey. She and I had known each other prior to that, but worked very closely and carefully together. And then her transition to the Governor's office, we've continued to maintain that close relationship, and I've had very kind comments from the Governor, certainly, and her staff, in my transition to Pro Tem. So, I've had a great relationship with the Governor. I think that the Governor's State of the State highlighted a couple of things that I've heard the Speaker highlight, that I want to highlight, that I think are so important. Alabama, in the midst of very difficult days, has got some extraordinary things to talk about, to be proud of. I mean, issues that we've managed from a conservative perspective with our budgets. I've talked with other colleagues from across America in different states, and they're suffering terribly as a result of the pandemic and their budgets, education spending, all kinds of things that are difficult. And I'm not saying that the virus has not hurt us. It certainly has. But we've been able to be very conservative in what we do. I think the Governor highlighted that. I think she talked about some things that were important related to legislation that the House and the Senate had already agreed with the Governor on, and the fact that she highlighted that, I think, just shows that working relationship is in good order between the different chambers of the Legislature and the Governor, because she's highlighting in her State of the State the same things that the Speaker and I have been working on with our members to get ready for and then to address in this first week even, on things that were very important. So, I think those are hallmarks of kind of already evidences in the fact that the relationship between the Legislature and the Governor are strong. And certainly, my friendship and relationship with the Governor has been strong, and I look forward to continuing to work with her.
Mr. Speaker, what say you?
Well, I did owe everything that Pro Tem has said. Governor Ivey, I have a great deal of respect for her and her leadership. She is, she's well aware, in her Lieutenant Governor's role, of the legislative process. She has worked very closely with the Legislature, and she has taken that over to the executive branch with her. She's, I'll tell you one thing that she'd done really from day one, is she wanted to make sure that the executive branch and the legislative branch were working very close together, and there were no hidden agendas. Everything was out front, it was transparent, and we were able to work together. Something as simple as sitting down and working on our budgets before the session ever starts. And many times, we would go into legislative session, and we would be working on budgets, and we might not know for sure what the executive branch was going to do with their budget until we was already working on education and general fund budgets. But with Governor Ivey, she sits down with the leadership of House and Senate. We go over those budgets, nothing's hidden. She lays them out for us, and then we have discussions about it. And it has made the budgeting process a lot smoother. And so, you know, that's just, that's just one little thing that she does, but I think it reflects on the way she leads. And she, if there's, if there's an issue that's important to Alabama, she doesn't mind getting out front on it, and she'll sit down and work with us, and we move forward. We're not always going to agree on everything, but then again, the way the legislative process is set up, and our government, we're not supposed to. There's supposed to be differences of opinion, and she respects those differences. And we have our opinions, and ultimately, we have that relationship to where we're not necessarily fighting with each other. We may disagree, but yet we sit down at the table and work towards a solution. So, I think, I think we're, between the executive branch and legislative branch, we're in for a good session moving forward.
Well, that's great to hear. You all are off to a fast start with the session. We're three days in now, and the Senate's already moved at least one big bill, several bills, but SB 30 is really one of those priority bills. On the House side, HB 170 and 192 moved on this third day, and obviously, they're in opposite chambers now. Senator Reed, talk to me about those three priority bills, and I know you're the sponsor of one of them. There's a lot of agreement between the House, the Senate leadership, it seems like, certainly the Governor and Lieutenant Governor, all that as well. Why are those three bills so important for our state?
Well, I think those three pieces of legislation are not new priorities. These were issues that we knew would be a challenge, even when we were back trying to finish the second year of the quadrennium session. I think it was on May the 18th when we were back, Mr. Speaker, for just that one day, when there were so many things we couldn't do because we just weren't able to navigate all that was required. And so, we already knew then that there was a highlight of several of these topics that were going to be important. So, you had the liability legislation that we handled in the Senate today, which says, you know, we're in the midst of the coronavirus, the fact that we would have all kinds of frivolous lawsuits because someone said, hey, I got coronavirus and just happened to be at your nonprofit or at your store or whatever, that those kinds of frivolous lawsuits did not need to clog up our judicial system. Now, certainly, if folks have a negligence and they're doing something that's incorrect, a bad actor, then they need to be held accountable. But I think that legislation did that in a really good way. So, we worked on that legislation today, and that was an agreed-on topic between the Governor and the Speaker in the House. We also worked on other things in the House. Of course, we're confirming folks through the Senate process all the time. So, this week, right off the bat, we had some holdover confirmations that were required, and so that was one of our constitutional responsibilities. So, we were able to move 10 confirmations just on Wednesday of this week. So, and then today, we had military legislation, of which I talked with the Speaker about, he was going to be getting those bills at a later time as well, to work on, to where the Lieutenant Governor had been engaged and involved in that process, to where we had pulled together a number of different legislative items related to veterans and military affairs and issues associated with bases that are located, military bases located in Alabama, and some of the needs that they had. And so, those are able to be addressed today in the state Senate with absolute zero conflict. And then we moved on and worked on a couple of other pieces of legislation that, some of them were important, we had discussed, some others were just relatively non-controversial topics that were easy for us to manage today. But we wanted to have a good work product, as the Speaker and I had talked about for both our chambers for the first week, to be able to let the people of Alabama know, we're back, we got a lot to do, we're off to the races here, trying to get it done quickly and efficiently.
And you had House Bills 170 and 192 on the floor today among a couple other items, and obviously, those are being carried by probably two of the finest legislators in the building, I think, Representatives Poole and Garrett. And I actually went to a work session earlier this week where they were just meticulous in making sure we had all the details correct, and same thing through the committee process and onto the floor. But do you think that just meticulous deliberative nature really reflected in how things went today, and just how, I think, well those bills seem to have turned out?
Yeah, I think so. Those bills received a lot of work. Senator Reed was very active, involved working with Senator Poole on the job incentive tax credit, or the job incentive bill that we were working on, Rural Alabama Act. This bill is so important, and of course, the timeline ran out in December. So, there was a sense of urgency to get that back up and let that be a part of the Department of Commerce in their role in trying to recruit business to bring to Alabama so we can help our economy and create jobs. And the, when you look at that legislation, it's so many issues dealing with that job incentive programs. You know, there's the qualifications that a company must meet in order to be eligible for any of those incentives. Then you've got the Rural Alabama Act, which is limited by population of the counties and the size of the counties and unemployment of the counties. There's so many things in there that has so been official for Alabama, and I was really glad to see the legislation, having those many issues, had to have a lot of work done to prepare it to come to the floor today. And the work was done. It's a, it's a good bill, and based on the debate we had, we covered most all of the bases that House members had when they came down to speak on the issue, and the bill carried, you know, overwhelming vote in the House to pass. And then the other bill that I thought was a very good bill for the taxpayer of Alabama, and that is to, the money that the taxpayers receive through the Federal Cares Act program had an Alabama state tax on it, when people were going to be filing their tax returns. Well, this bill relieves that revenue and takes that tax away from the people, because this has been a tough time for many Alabamians. And this money that came in was welcome relief for many families. And because of that, we didn't want to impose a state tax on that money that would come in, so we passed the bill today to not tax those dollars. And I think that's, it's a good gesture for the taxpayer, and it's good for our state as a whole. So, those were two bills, which was part of our priority package that we had worked on with the Governor and the Senate in the House. And so, you know, here we are in the first week. We've got those bills moving now, and they'll be going up to the Senate. We passed over 40 pieces of legislation out of committees this week, and as we move into next week, we'll have a full special order calendar. The Rules Committee and the members made their picks today, and we'll be working to get that calendar ready. And so, Tuesday will be a day that we'll spend some long hours up there passing a lot of legislation. And there's many good pieces. I think that Senator Reed alluded to the fact that that second year with the COVID hitting us and us having to limit what we could do, it put us in a position to where members are excited to be back, they're working very hard, and they're working on all of those pieces of legislation that they had from 2020, and then also now from 2021. So, we've got a lot of work to do, but the procedures that we put in place are working, especially in the House, because we were a little bit different in the House from the voting and our legislative process. And today, the iPads that we had in place, utilizing the sixth floor as part of our chamber now, the voting went well, the debate on the floor was orderly, and so, we're, you know, we're moving forward in a, in good fashion.
That's great to hear. One of those bills moving to the Senate now is your Incentives Bill, the one you're co-sponsoring in the Senate. One of the words that really sticks out to me just about that bill is innovation. And you've been a champion of innovation bills these last few sessions, and I believe you're vice-chairing the new Innovate Alabama. Talk to me just about how important, really, just this whole effort is. It's not one piece of legislation. It's a concerted effort to make innovation and modernizing our economy, improving competitiveness, make it a real priority.
Well, I think that is certainly a good summation, Sean, of the things that we're trying to do. If you look at, we go back to the Alabama Jobs Act. Actually, the Speaker and I sponsored the Alabama Jobs Act originally. He was the Rules Chairman at the time. He was not the Speaker, but we worked on that together to pass that legislation. In the Senate, the Grow in Alabama and the AIM Act, I sponsored those in the Senate as well. So, I've been involved and engaged in these incentive packages and opportunities to offer tools to economic developers in the Department of Commerce and the DECA to be able to utilize in recruiting industry to Alabama as kind of a hallmark of what I've tried to do in my legislative service. And Alabama has done extraordinarily well. I mean, our track record over the last several years has been really strong. But the Speaker and myself, back when we first did that four or five years ago on the Alabama Jobs Act, we put a sunset provision in that law on purpose so that it would force us as legislators to look at not just the good things that we had accomplished as a result, but force us to look at what the landscape was going to be in the future. And you talk about a competitive environment. We're competing with Mississippi and Michigan and North Carolina and wherever, trying to get industry to come to Alabama. We've been very successful, but that landscape is changing. One of the things that's a hallmark of this legislation that Chairman Poole passed today in the House was that it has a shorter timeframe on it than what we had originally with the incentive packages. And that is simply because we are doubling down on the idea that we don't exactly know what our economy and what recruitment opportunities are going to be available to us in the future. If you look at a post-coronavirus economy, what's it going to mean in Alabama? What are things that are going to be different? We've got great stories. One of them is, in my district, in Fayette, Alabama, in Fayette County, you had a manufacturer of medical gloves, candidly, almost went out of business. But as a result of what transpired and the need for PPE, those folks are now, I think they're on their third expansion, they've gone from 100 and something employees to 400 employees. And it's just because their product is in such demand. There will be other things like that, kind of some bringing back onshore of businesses that Alabama wants to compete for. We also talk about innovation. I've learned so much in the Alabama Innovation Commission. That Innovate Alabama process that Chairman Poole and I are chairing, that the Governor appointed, we've got brilliant people that are on that commission. They've had all kinds of experience with entrepreneurial startups, high-tech jobs, all these kinds of things have had great success. We've got an advisory board for that commission that includes Condoleezza Rice and her resource available to Alabama now from the Hoover Institution at Stanford University, which has all kinds of research available to Alabama. So, you know, thinking about those kinds of things and being able to put incentive packages together and looking at where we're going and what we're doing, I think times are exciting. I think Alabama's future is very bright. If you look at some of the extraordinary things that are happening in Alabama, I mean, Marshall Space Flight Center and the Red Star and Arsenal and the trip back to the moon and eventually to Mars, and Space Force being headquartered in Huntsville, which is the home of the Speaker, I mean, wow! And if you think about the genomics facility, which is going to be at UAB now, Alabama made a huge investment there, but that is a world-class facility that is going to be the future of deciding how medications are going to be administered to all of us in the future on how we battle diseases. We've got artificial intelligence all across Alabama related to the automotive industry, the same way with the airline industry that we have down on the coast. We could go on and on about all the exciting things going on in Alabama. But being able to recruit, innovate, be competitive is something that is very important to us, and I think this legislation gives us a chance to do that.
Absolutely. And one of those things, just to keep the state moving forward and looking into the future, I'll ask this to both of you, Mr. Speaker, first. Broadband, obviously, we've, we've done some very successful, I think, grant programs in the past couple of years. You had the right-of-way legislation, which seems to be paying off already. What's next for investing in broadband in our state?
Well, I think, I think we've got to continue the momentum that we've got. Funding is one of the key issues that we're looking at right now. As you know, we've got the federal programs that are out there, but yet some of those programs, they're long-term. We need some broadband accessibility today. And we want to continue to work on our grant program that we have from the state perspective, which has made some changes and allowed us to expand the broadband capability. But I think from a legislative standpoint, we don't necessarily have any piece of legislation that we're working on, but I do think it's time for us to sit down and take this session to do an assessment of where we are and what we have done in the past, and let's, let's see if that's working, and is it moving us in the direction we need to go. One of the things that the COVID pandemic has, has, I want to say, help would be the wrong word to use, but it has definitely enlightened us to the point that we see the need and we see areas of our state that are underserved and unserved when it comes to broadband access. And, you know, the school issue that we faced with COVID, trying to get classroom instruction out to our children, these are things that we can learn from. The infrastructure that was not there, the infrastructure that we need, the locations we need to focus on. So, all of this are things that we need to be doing an assessment of during this legislative session. We need to, we need to also be looking for funding. We also need to be continuing to use the private sector as well as our utility-based programs that we've put in place for our rural co-ops that's taking a leadership role in trying to get lines run on their right-of-ways. All of these are things that we need to continue to work on. And so, broadband will definitely be one of our top priorities in this session.
Yes, sir. Speaking of connectivity, I'm going to ask you the same question, but Senator Singleton today joked, we're getting 5G in some areas, he can't get a G. How are we going to get more broadband out to just rural areas of the state like his?
Well, I represent a rural district, and, you know, I think one of the things I would certainly agree with the things that the Speaker said about the significance. Alabama Legislature and Alabama in general, we've already been very aggressive on the broadband topic, but it is a huge task, requires a lot of funding. The federal government realizes and recognizes this, and as a result, they have funding that's available to Alabama and other states as well. You know, one of the things that I think is very important, we see now organizations like the Rural Alabama Broadband Coalition, these folks have come together as a group to be able to say, we know it's a big deal, we might be competitors, but we're willing to engage together for the good of Alabama, trying to find ways to allow this problem to be solved, to the point the Speaker made. It affects every element of our life, healthcare, education, economic development, and just quality of life. So, those groups working together and having a real collaborative effort, you know, from government and private sector and coalitions and collaboration, I think is very important. One thing that I've learned that I think is a wise decision that we've made legislatively in some of the uses of resources thus far that we've put toward the broadband topic, I understand in listening to information from Kenneth Boswell with the DECA and some other things that they've worked on through a program, to have other things that they've worked on through a program, to have some consultants that are very smart, capable folks be able to help map Alabama's broadband access. The Federal Commission, the FCC, they have information, but many times, we recognize and members of our coalition and others that are looking at this, say that that information is incorrect. So you're saying to Senator Singleton's point, "Hey, you've got internet in your area. Yeah, the only problem is it's not 5G, it's little G." I mean, it's, we may have it, but it's not adequate to do the things that we need to do. It's not even adequate for today's student to do their homework, where they're having to get online and look up all kinds of things to be able to do their schoolwork. So being able to have that mapping program of which is going forward and very aggressive in some resource that Alabama's allocated to be able to do that, I think is going to help us with knowing what to do with state grants, being able to give wise information to, like this Rural Caucus, that's looking at the collaboration, that's looking at these ideas, being able to have that data to tell the federal government, "Hey, you say we can't apply for grants in this area, but we have a proof set of evidence that says it's not sufficient. The broadband access is not sufficient in this area." So it gives us some information to be able to say, "We, in fact, do need those grant dollars for these particular areas." So I think there's a lot of work going on with that. I would agree with the Speaker that the most important theme moving forward, once we kind of have understood a lot of what we're doing and reassessing where we are, is to having funding moving forward to be able to offer additional grants, larger dollars. The goal is to go to the end of the road. How can we find unserved areas and allow them to come into the 21st century, especially in rural areas of our state? And so I think the legislature is committed to that. I think it is a big priority. If you ask almost every member of either of our chambers, "What's one of the things you think that's most important to Alabama?", broadband's going to be in the conversation every time.
As you've both said, this is a long-term endeavor. And one of the things that Senator Marsh said on Tuesday was, "We really need to identify probably a long-term funding stream that is, at least in part, going towards broadband." And one thing I've heard speculated about is potential gaming revenue, and this kind of being an intersection of two big, really legislative priorities here. Is that something y'all could see, maybe the members consider? Obviously, not a kind of forecasting how the gaming is going to go, but do you think gaming revenue could possibly go towards broadband? Is that something generally you'd support, Mr. Speaker?
Well, yeah, I think that any revenue stream that we have, broadband needs to be considered a part of that because of the urgency and the importance of the connectivity that we need. When you look, and one of the priorities for Senator Marsh is broadband. And in some of the discussions that we've had with him, the gaming issue is a way to become a resource to get some of those funds in. And education will be a discussion that will come up if and when we talk about the lottery and the gaming issue. And of course, when we look at broadband and the importance of broadband and the connectivity to educate our children, then I think it fits very well. It's a good fit in there. So yes, the answer to that would be yes. We still don't have a bill, so, you know, this is just a discussion point that we're at right now. And I think that when you look at some of the polling done in our state, I think the percentages are very high, that people want to have an opportunity to vote on a lottery. But then again, when you talk about the lottery, you've got to make sure that all of the other gaming entities in the state are a part of that discussion. It happens every year. Every year, we've tried to address the lottery. There's always the other groups that want to come to the table and have discussions. So I think Senator Marsh and the legislation that he's trying to work on and the discussions that we're having in both House and Senate is dealing with the broader scope of the gaming based upon the report that the Governor, the commission that the Governor put together last year, that this was a nonpartisan group, some well-qualified people, good citizens of Alabama came together to sit down at the table and talk about gaming from the state perspective. And that information's going to be very helpful as well moving forward. So right now, we're in discussion point. We have no bill that's ready to be dropped, and let's see where it goes. But definitely, part of that funding source, broadband needs to be a part of that discussion.
What do you think about that broadband funding source? And just in your views generally, how do you see, really, where do you think we are in discussions? Are they going well? Do you think we're making progress?
Well, I think we're making some progress. You know, I think that the issue, I answered some questions for a few of my colleagues earlier in the day today when we were on the floor of the Senate. They said, you know, "What do you think about the gaming topics? You know, what do you think's different? We've dealt with this year after year." And I think there are some things different. I think the Speaker mentioned one of them, which is the fact that the Governor's Task Force from some very well-known, well-respected Alabamians, they put together an 800-page report, which is more information from a standalone, third-party Alabama task force than has ever been generated. All the good, the bad, the ugly related to what's going on in gaming in other states. And I think that amount of information for the legislature is really something we've never had before. I think that adds some momentum to the discussion because it shows, number one, the Governor's interested to get real data. And then also, now that information is available and been presented, so that members of the legislature have that to look at. I also think to the question, Sean, on broadband, some of the times when we've talked about, "What are we going to do with gaming?", okay? And I agree with the Speaker that you have to look at it as a comprehensive topic. It can't be siloed out to different areas because you never get anything accomplished. But when you think about the, "We need to work on gaming because," what has that "because" been in times past? Maybe it's been, "Well, we just need to answer the question once and for all," or "We need to deal with it," or "We need to get some money to give it to the budgets because maybe they don't have as much as they need," or some of those. I think now what we're hearing is there's some very significant reasons that these resources could be implemented that would be very beneficial to the people of Alabama. The broadband issue is a huge one. Another one that I've heard talked about is scholarships, scholarships for Alabama students and being able to get an education at a two-year school or at a four-year school, and how that would be something that would be of benefit to Alabamians. But also rural hospitals. What about healthcare in rural areas? There's a major problem there. We've got a lot of issues there. Broadband's a part of that. A lot of that technology interacts together. You know, I heard a story the other day about a scenario to where broadband access, when introduced into a scenario for a rural hospital, allowed them to establish a relationship with a large tertiary care center so that because of that high-speed internet access, their local physicians had access to specialists at those large centers, and it meant that the patient could stay in the care of the rural hospital and be able to receive the same kind of care and information and not have to be transferred every single time to the much larger facility. All those things kind of go together. So I think when you think about, "Do we need to deal with the gaming topic?", many people say yes, and the Speaker and I have seen the same polling. There's no question the people of Alabama want to vote on that topic. But then if we vote on it, the next big question is, "Where does the money go?" And I think there's some really good discussions that are ongoing right now as to where those resources would be utilized for the benefit of Alabamians.
Another big topic we've heard about, prison construction. But as you both know, there's so much more really to address the DOJ lawsuit, but just to fix our criminal justice system. Mr. Speaker, I think a package of bills has actually originated in Judge Hill's committee. Could you just walk us through a little bit about what the legislature is looking at besides the construction aspect of just really reforming other aspects of our prison system?
Well, the Judiciary Committee in the House has been working. As you know, the Governor had a prison commission that was put together, and this group was a group of Senate and House members sitting and discussing issues concerning the rehabilitation, the release of inmates, pardons and parole, all of these. Some of the bills that the House Judiciary Committee has been working on this week deal with those kinds of issues, resentencing guidelines. From the standpoint of that, let's say that you've got an individual that is on some type of probation and they violate their probation. And let's say, to use the example, is, let's say you've got someone who was maybe on probation for a felony offense, and then they got caught while they're on probation, they got caught with a drug offense, maybe a minor drug offense. Well, to violate that person's probation, they may have like a 12-year sentence left on their original sentence, but yet what they, the arrest that was made to revoke their probation was just maybe something, a misdemeanor or a minor offense in some type of drug or something. Well, you can't, it's just, sometimes it doesn't make good sense for a judge to sit on the bench and send that person back to the penitentiary for 12 years. Well, through this, these are some things that Judiciary Committee has been addressing. How do we resentge someone like that? What kind of freedom can we give the courts and the judges to allow these second offender situations to be more manageable so we're not putting somebody back in penitentiary for years and years of incarceration? So these are the type of things that they're working on. Another bill that was worked on through the House was the, as you remember, we had a terrible incident where an inmate was released and then went up to North Alabama and committed a homicide up there and killed someone. At the time that that happened, there was really no tracking system to even know where that individual was. One of the bills was to allow the pardons and parole probation officers to be able to track these individuals so that they would have like a, some type of bracelet or tracking device on them during this time that they're completely, they're out, but yet they're still being monitored under a probation status. So that's another piece of legislation that was worked on. These are the type of things that we're working on that runs together with the prison issue, you know, building new facilities, but yet is so important to allowing us to address the opportunity to get nonviolent offenders out of the system and back into the community in a safe manner. So those are things that we're working on right now.
Another issue we've seen just the last few years, it's here again, Senator Melson has a medical marijuana bill. It seems like he has the votes in the Senate from what I understand, but, Mr. Speaker, how do you think that bill fares in the House?
Well, I don't know. We've had some serious debate about it. We got, matter of fact, last year before the COVID issue hit, we were looking at votes and talking to members about the medical marijuana issue. Senator Melson has done a lot of work on this, and we're in a position right now where we're going to just wait and see, and we're going to see what comes from the Senate to us, and then we'll address that piece of legislation when it comes down. And I think there's some members that they would like to see the federal government act on this because it's almost like the state is approving the use of a drug that the federal government still says is illegal. And there needs to be, you know, kind of a blessing, if you will, from the federal government on this particular drug. So they have some questions about that. We also, if you'll remember, we had several legislators in the House that helped to put together Carley's Law, and that was the use of marijuana to help our young children. And it was under a research-type program, but yet it was still a way of using, recognizing that drug as a treatment. So with that in mind, we've got a mixed bag, but the House will take a serious look at what the Senate sends us, and we'll see where we go.
Before we wrap up, I think I'm already way over time, so we could keep doing this for hours, but we've been talking a little bit about off-camera. I think y'all have just done a tremendous job with the protocols in place. Obviously, we all wish there wasn't a pandemic and the public could be there as normal, but, you know, I think for folks at home, just to know, I've been in the building three straight days, and I felt safe, and the access was great for the media, so that's been good. Obviously, I know there were probably a lot of differences, though, for y'all, just besides the public not being there and that kind of, is there just a difference maybe in the, I don't know, almost the fellowship of the members? How has it been just this first week or so, just kind of on an interpersonal basis like that?
You know, I think that, I think the feel in the body is very different. And you've got, you know, I walk into the Senate chamber for the first time, and you've got plexiglass shields up around the staff, you know, to protect them that where they're doing their work. And you've got that in the offices, you know, with the different staff members. You know, everyone's wearing a mask, and, you know, many of those same issues, I think, are challenging. You know, I noticed today, of which you've seen this, Sean, certainly the Speaker knows this, I mean, the floor of the Alabama Senate, the floor of the Alabama House, it's a loud place. People are talking, there's a lot going on. So if you're trying to communicate with someone and you've got a mask on, it's so hard to get them to hear what you're, you know, trying to say.
And you're six feet apart.
And you're six feet apart. So some of those things make it difficult. But, you know, I think, I mean, the members of the Alabama Senate and the Alabama House Representatives, these are quality people that have been willing to make a sacrifice to be engaged and involved in public service. They're here for a reason, and they're dedicated to it. They enjoy the collaboration with their colleagues, even if you're having to shout through the mask to get your point across. So I think things are different. I think they've been challenging. They will continue to be. We all want to do the right things. But as far as the spirit within the body, you know, I feel like it's strong as can be. I just think people are, they're glad to be back at work, they're glad to be doing things that they've been waiting months and months and months to execute on and be able to do. So I just think in general, the spirit of the Senate is very positive. And so I'm looking forward to continued robust debate and working on things, you know, the way we should.
How about the House, Mr. Speaker?
Same way. I agree with Pro Tem. It's a lot of energy there, you know, a lot of excitement. Members are, I mean, when you look at the pieces of legislation that's been turned in this week, I mean, I see members walking up and down that hallway with those green jackets in their hand, talking to their colleagues. They're excited about being back, they're excited about doing work for the people, and they are making a sacrifice. We, our ultimate goal is to make sure that we provide as safe a place for them to come and work. One of the things that I made mention of on the first day was that not only are the legislators making sacrifices, the legislators' families are making sacrifices as well. Because many, you know, when we finished up today, they're going to be going back home. And so, you know, there's risk involved, yes. We can't eliminate all of the risk. All we can try to do is minimize it. But there is a real excitement, and there's a real dedication to try to do their job and do work. It's a little bit challenging because the legislative process is about personalities and building relationships. And as you're working together, you know, you want to give somebody a handshake or pat them on the back, or, you know, some of the ones, you want to give the staff a hug and say, "It's good to see you," that kind of atmosphere. And so we're all having to kind of back away from the norm to try to make sure that we are mindful of each other's safety. But I agree with Pro Tem, there's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of good work going on, and we're really thankful to be able to see some of the things that we've put in place working. One of my concerns was always transparency because some of the bills that we've talked about during this interview, these are important bills to the public. And we do the public's business, and we need their input. So it's been challenging for us to try to make sure that the public still has some type of access, whether it be through virtual means, whether it be on a cell phone, whether it's been through a special scheduled meeting. But that's been one of our challenges, but we're moving forward, and we're making ourselves accessible. And so I'm excited about where we are today.
Well, thank you both for your leadership and your sacrifice, too, because I know it's not easy, but I think it's well worth it, and I'm excited to see the rest of the session. So thank you both again for being here.
Well, let me say, I know you've run over time, but I want to say, "Thank you for doing this," because this is another way that we can get the doing this" because this is another way that we can get the message out to the public. So I'm very appreciative of you and the organization and your willingness to try to work with us to get the information out to the people.
Happy to do it. Thank you so much.
Sean, I've enjoyed it, and it's always good to be with the Speaker, and appreciate you and the opportunity to, again, visit about these topics. You know, when we talk about them and discuss them, it keeps us thinking, keeps us focused on the things that are most important. And so, again, I'm enthusiastic about the opportunities ahead, and we're going to be about the tasks.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll see you all on Tuesday.